Recording in progress.
I introduce tonight's moderator, Jill Nadeau.
Thank you very much, Pat. Good evening. The spring election will take place on Tuesday, April 5th. And just so you know, after the final results of the election have been canvassed, the three candidates with the highest number of votes will take their terms of office for three years. And the candidate with the fourth highest number of votes will take a one-year limited term school member at-large seat. And I'd like to welcome the candidates and thank them for taking the time to talk to the voters. And we are happy that all five candidates agreed to be with us for this forum. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves. And then I will ask the first of nine questions, and they will have one minute to answer each. The order that the candidates will answer will alternate. The original order was determined alphabetically by last name. A slide will appear for each question, and after I read the question, the name of the candidate to begin will be listed. When that happens, that candidate will start. There will be a 30-second and 15-second time reminder. And I will not introduce each speaker. They will respond when their name appears on the screen. After the last question, candidates will have two minutes to make a closing statement. Let's begin with our first introduction.
Thanks, Jill. Mike Higgins running for school board. Obviously, that's why I'm here tonight. Lifelong resident in the city of Watertown, married. Many amazing kids, sometimes too many, I think. Anybody with children probably understands that. However, the reason I'm running, quite honestly, I feel like the current board does a fantastic job. They do the best of their abilities. However, I think a fresh set of eyes can always help and make maybe some new changes or some things that really could help our community and our schools. And that would be me. I'll keep it short and speak freely.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight. My name is Lori Holland. My husband and I have been residents here in Watertown for about 19 years. I have a son who is a freshman at the Watertown High School. And we also have a daughter who is a freshman at UW-Ashkosh. My desire to be a member on the board is just to serve. I want to assist and to ensure that all of the students in the district are receiving the best education that they deserve. I want them to be in a positive environment. And I want to be a part of a team that is willing to work together. And that's with everyone in the district, the community, all the stakeholders, and anybody that's involved. I'm willing to put in the work that's needed and would love to be able to grow off of all the opportunities we have. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for hosting. Thank you for those watching at home. My name is David Schrader. I'm a 17-year resident of Watertown and a one-year board member. I think I was in fourth last year, hence I got a one-year seat and get to go through this all over again. Married with two adult children, both who've children who have graduated from Watertown High School within the last four or five years. And I'm on several other area boards, YMCA Economic Development Hospital, Health Foundation. And what I've found on those boards is it really takes at least the first year or two when, for the most part, all you're doing is asking questions. So I spent my first year asking a lot of questions, trying to understand how the school board works. And I'm excited about the opportunity to continue that with another term where maybe I can actually start providing some answers. So I, like many of the people on this forum, on this event, are interested in the continued growth and the success of the school district and the kids in it. And with that, I will pass it down to the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Paul Vandenberg. My wife's name is Debbie. I've been living in Watertown for about 19 years now. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to be a participant in the forum. I'd like to start just by saying that I value education and the opportunities that it can provide for anyone. I also value the efforts of community service. So because of my interest in education and my desire to serve the community, I'm seeking reelection for a seat on the Watertown Unified School District Board of Education. I first ran six years ago, and at that time, I didn't have a specific platform or a personal agenda. My goal had three objectives at that time. One was to serve the community by advocating for a school system that would provide all students the opportunity to reach their best potential. Secondly, I wanted to be able to represent the community by listening, asking questions, and making challenging decisions based on what would be in the best interest of the school district. And then thirdly, I wanted to support and carry out oversight responsibilities of all school-related operations. So here I am, six years later. My reasons for seeking reelection to the school board really haven't changed. Thank you.
Good evening. Many thanks to the AAUW for hosting this opportunity. My name is Craig Wortman. I am a husband, a father, and a caring community member. My wife Jessica is an ELA teacher at Riverside Middle School. She's actually completing her 17th year teaching. I am pro-teacher, and I am pro-parent. I have been working closely to observe how this Watertown Unified School District has functioning, has been functioning over the last couple of years. And let me tell you, there's work to do on this front. I respect and strive to foster reciprocal relationships between parents and teachers. If we have learned anything over the last couple of years, it is that it would have been easy for staff members to just walk out. Yet, our teaching staff prove their commitment, dedication, and love for your child to push through a challenging time. We've also learned a new appreciation as parents that some of us can't, aren't cut out to be teachers and respect the way that teachers can keep our children focused and engaged. As a member of the community, I encourage us to set aside tribalism and give each other the benefit of the doubt. By strengthening the parent-teacher bond, we can take a step forward to motivate academic success in this district. There are some things to work hard at to address, like learning loss, mental health needs from the wake of the pandemic. Together, we can get there. A prominent board member stated last year, "Let the teachers teach," and I agree with that. But also, "Let the parents parent." Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, candidates. Let's go on to question number one. What do you believe are your strongest attributes? And how will they help you if you are elected to the school board?
So I think the number one thing that I have is I care about this district. I have been actively involved. I have been to board meetings, to committee meetings. I have been reading policies, curriculum, whatever there is as a parent that I can do from this side. I've been doing it. I've been communicating with other parents, students. I've been trying to learn as much as I can. And I'm willing to bring that knowledge and learn whatever I need to, whatever research I need to do, whatever, however much time it takes, I will be there and I will do it so that there is success and growth in our district. Thank you.
Hi. My strongest attributes is probably my experience. The most interesting thing is that of the several boards that I'm on and the decisions that they have to make with the financial burdens upon them and how they make those decisions and how they involve the shareholders, the stakeholders, the involved parties in those decisions. That's what I try to bring to the table. I don't have a personal agenda. There's no particular issue that is a hot topic button for me. So I like to pay attention, think about what's being said, who's saying it, the reasons why it's important, and then work with my fellow board members to try to come up with the best decision and encourage them to think in a similar systemic way.
Hi, thanks. I guess I would like to say that one of my strongest attributes is probably my experience in education. I come from a long career in education, so I have knowledge of what teachers do and what administrators do and how schools generally operate. So that was a real benefit when I first got on the board six years ago. So that experience helped me a lot. I'd also like to say that I think I do have got good job of listening, keep an open mind, and have willingness to, you know, make difficult choices and difficult decisions. And also, as David said, being able to work together as a board to come up with solutions. Thanks.
You know, I have a great love for this community, and I have a great passion for people. I really, you can really expect me to dig deeper into the facts that are being presented instead of taking things at face value or not questioning what's actually happening there. You can expect me to be a voice for parents, teachers, and staff, including like, just like the other guys that are running the show, like maintenance personnel, custodians, transportation drivers, and our community members. I welcome feedback and input. We need to listen and allow people to feel heard and understood. If no one's listening to what's broken, problems are extremely difficult to fix. And I don't support anti-transparency policies. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll wrap this one up on this question, right? I think as far as strongest attributes, my work experience definitely has to play part in this. I actually have, you know, dealt with contracts and some representing that I do. I represent roughly 10,000 members in the state of Wisconsin. And believe me, with 10,000 members, they all have different views, kind of like our city, right? I'm also a father. I mentioned before, I have quite a few children. I have six children, actually, and all of them with different views and trying to navigate that. I think it's extremely important to listen to our people, our communities, our teachers. I really do. And I think that it's important to listen to professionals that you surround yourself with to make sure you have your facts right. I think that would wrap mine up.
Thank you, candidates. Question number two. As a member of the Board of Education, you will need to make decisions regarding budget, which will require balancing the needs of students and teachers with the needs of the community. What is most important and why?
What is most important and why? Having a, I'm going to say a balanced budget, having a budget or a school district that's running in the black is important. At this point, having one year in, I know where the future big rocks are going to be in our trip down the stream. And as a board, we have to continue to keep focused on that. A lot of times, we get pulled into the minutia. We get pulled into the weeds. And that's not helping us address those big rocks that we might be running into. I think that the awareness has been heightened over the past few years. But unfortunately, our ability to focus on it has been distracted by a lot of other smaller things. But Jill, the question is to what's important and why. Obviously, you can't just always put the, you know, the maintenance of the buildings first. And you can't always just put busing first or the next contract or the, you know. We all know that we're trying to produce students who are competent to be future leaders of this community. And it really is going to just be a balancing act. But the first thing we have to do is get it out there and spend some time talking about it and figure out how we're going to address it.
That's a very good question as far as balancing the needs. I would say that, you know, it is difficult because you always want to put the needs of the students first. To me, that's very paramount, especially when I was a teacher. But then from a board perspective, you also have tax dollars at stake as well. So it is a good balancing act, and I think we want to try to do the best that we can fiscally to try to provide opportunities for the students. And that's going to be best for them within a budget that we can afford and stick with. Because again, yes, we want to have a balanced budget. We want to, the goal is to stay in the black as well. So it is a tough balance, but we're going to have to, like I say, put students first and try to balance the budget that will match that. Thanks.
Yeah, there's a lot of budget challenges out there. And among those, you know, I mean, we really need to consider that balancing act between student achievement and some of the other essential things that we do. The public school system is an essential service. But I would view it as my job to support that service as much as possible. We have to be good stewards of the limited resources provided by our taxpayers. We do have ESER funds at the moment that can be utilized properly. If it's utilized property, it could soften a potential budget cliff that we might be facing in a year or two when a referendum falls off. We could even utilize like a small thing, like getting a key person to coordinate transportation schedules. I mean, those are pretty important things that we could try to save a little bit of money with what we already have. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. And honestly, I think we're all feeling the same on this panel right now. I think it's very important to actively listen to our teachers, not just listen, but actively listen. Make sure we understand the difficulties that they're facing because I do believe they've all faced some very difficult times over the last couple of years and are still facing those challenges. I also believe we have to balance with our students exactly what, you know, get them what they need to succeed. And all doing this while being fiscally responsible. I mean, it is a very tough position to be in, you know, basing it off of my past experiences at work. But it is delicate, but I really, I really think we need to listen to our teachers and our students, making sure that they both get what they need to succeed.
So I agree with everyone that just spoke. I do agree that, you know, it's most important that when we are working around a small budget, that we are not allowing it to impact achievement of the students. That obviously is number one. There's some important steps that I think you can dig into and try to get creative. But you can also make sure when you are making any cuts, for example, like classroom technology. Make sure that there's a value in that technology. It's not a distraction. And if it is a value, don't get rid of it. Making cuts first to, like Dave was saying, you know, energy costs, maintenance, things that will not impact the students. So just got to find ways to be creative, to do more with less. Thank you.
Question three. There are elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds coming into the school district. How do you think this funding should be allocated and why?
Well, that is a great question. There's a number of ways that it can be used. I guess I would like to see some of it come with trying to bridge the gap maybe of academic loss from the time that we've been with COVID. I would like to see a focus on activities and programs that would probably probably close that gap so that students can get to where they hopefully should be or could be from the years, the two years that we lost with COVID that weren't necessarily, there were interruptions to normal operation. Thank you.
Yeah, I know I touched on it a little bit earlier. I think the general nature of ESER funds were to deal with the learning loss that we faced over the last year when it came in the wake of this pandemic. So yeah, we're facing a budget cliff, but I don't really feel like a lot of that money should be utilized to fill budget holes necessarily. I do think that this past year was a prime example of how we could use ESER dollars to get some full-time subs and enhance, make better substitute teacher enhancements. You know, some of our subs, our teachers have to sub during prep periods. In some districts, that's two or three times a month. That's considered a problem. Well, teachers are subbing two or three times a week. That disrupts their whole week. And it's completely demoralizing, disruptive, and extremely counterproductive.
Craig, you said almost word for word kind of what I was thinking. You know, obviously, I think everybody here again is also thinking academic losses and what's been, what's been happening over the last two years. You know, once again, the subs and the para shortages and shortfalls that they're having, being able to help lift the teachers and get the teachers to where they need to be. So maybe they're not prepping during times that they can have a little minute to breathe, right? And same thing with the paras and the subs, finding some help for them when there's issues at schools and they really have nowhere to turn to except for their teacher who was already stressed. And it gets pretty tough. So I really think that those are the areas we need to focus on.
So again, that, you know, all the answers I'm hearing align pretty much with what I think. We need to support our staff in the schools. We need to look at learning loss, look at that achievement gap. We need to deal with the mental health of our students and our staff that are in the schools that have been dealing with this for the last two years. Mental health, we know, everyone's aware that it is at an all-time high in youth. No one can deny this. It's there. It's hidden. It's secretive. And you sometimes have to dig and make sure that these kids are okay. So yeah, I think the funds need to be moving forward, and they need to be starting to be used now. We need to have a plan. We can't wait. That's just more loss. No more waiting. We need to, we need to use those for these reasons. Thank you.
Given that the state has set out or the government has set out what it can and can't be spent on, some people touched on it. It's not just to fill budget holes. But if we look back at the last two years and we look at what the barriers were to success, a lot of these things were always barriers to success. It's just that they were magnified in the last two years, whether it be the mental health, as Lori stated, or access of the teachers being stretched thin, the lunches, food, then also technology. And so if it's going to be spent on capital and it's going to be spent on items that are there to bring us back up to where we would have been had we not had the pandemic, I think a good way to look at it is what's stopping us from succeeding? And if we can spend our time even pre-2020 or pre-2019, what was stopping us from succeeding or doing better? And if we can focus it on those things and put investment into those pots, I think we're going to go a long way to seeing a return on investment on those ESER funds.
And on to question number four. All school districts are having problems recruiting and retaining teachers. What can the school board do to encourage recruitment and retention of new teachers?
Yeah. Our staff happens to be some of the best staff, I believe, in the state. I feel that if we encourage environments where there's a lot of enthusiasm by which our kids can still can maintain engagement in the class, that's going to be atmosphere that's going to attract our staff. We have to work within budget constraints. I get that. But I think we really need to provide them with administrative support as well. So I really think that we got to get full-time subs. And we have to find a way so that these teachers aren't subbing in prep periods as well. It's just such a big deal. It's easy way, easy. It's easier to fix that than some of the other challenges when it comes to trying to maintain and recruit staff sometimes. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. You know, unfortunately, we have to stay within budget, and I completely understand that. This is something that we're really going to be looking at where I work as well under our next contract. But I think the first thing to address is really pay. And, you know, looking at that right now with inflation where it's at, you know, it's kind of hard to keep a teacher or a para or anybody else in that situation without giving them decent pay, at least for the area, right? I think another thing we have to look at is some of the mental health resources that our teachers can get while they dive through some of these tough times. And I think that the next big thing is engage them in our community. Welcome them as they're starting and make sure that they're engaged and they have, you know, somebody to talk to when they're going through things.
So I'm going to be honest that this is a tough question. I think the number one thing we need to do is we need to make sure that we are supporting the staff that we currently have. We need to be talking to them. We need to be listening to them. We need to be engaged with them regularly, finding out what it is that they need. Is it that they need, that they're feeling that there's not enough subs? Do they feel that there's not enough assistance in the classroom? Do they feel that the class periods are too long? What, whatever the topic is, that is what we first have to listen to because there may be some solutions that aren't necessarily just hiring more staff. There may be some solutions that we can boost the environment, things like that. And I think now that we can get kids on track, it's going to take a little bit of burden off of the parents or, excuse me, that the teachers have been feeling. So, thank you.
I would agree. Pay is almost always pointed to as the number one reason for retention or for losing somebody. And I'm not saying it's not a component. I believe the good news is that Watertown has less turnover than most other school districts, whether that's because we are a destination for teachers. Maybe there's opportunities for improvement. Or maybe we can afford to pay a little bit more being a larger district. But I think that job satisfaction, the culture in which you work in, opportunities for improvement or opportunities for advancement and being valued by your boss and your peers as well as actually feeling like you're having an impact, all have much larger role than just pay. Pay is typically stated as being number one, but I think most studies show it ends up being number five. So kind of what Lori just said, if we continue to focus on teacher satisfaction, making sure they're not burning out, give them the support that they need, listen to what they'd like to do with their classrooms, and then get out of their way, we'll do ourselves all a huge favor and probably not have to affect the budget too much.
Yes, this is going to be kind of an ongoing problem. I understand it's not going to be unique to just Watertown. However, I would say that at Watertown, I think competitive pay scale is obviously going to be a help, as everybody mentioned. We do pretty well here at Watertown for our region. The good benefit packages as well is also a great incentive. Also, I think a really well-organized mentorship program will help new teachers acclimate into our school system. Look at also good professional growth opportunities, professional development so that teachers can grow in their profession is always a key element. And also just a great school climate. Once people are here as teachers, to have that good school climate and camaraderie. Once people are here as teachers to have that good school climate camaraderie. Thank you.
And number five, what are your feelings regarding the statewide private school voucher program? And how is it impacting our school district?
So that one's another tough question, right? So the the voucher program, you know, I I answered this question on a on another panel thing. So I I can't get behind it 100%, right? I I think that our private schools, there's a reason students go to our private schools and I think we could use that money in our public setting. However, I do know that there are some students in private schools that need the public setting help and need some of the stuff that we that we offer, you know, once again, maybe trying to find some of their education shortfalls, things like that. So I I can't get behind the the voucher program wholeheartedly. However, I do think that we need to help some of the students.
So when it comes to the voucher program, a school board cannot make any changes to this. They don't, they don't make any decisions about this. I can, I can see where it's going to be a challenge. It's it's always going to be a challenge to the budget of of a school district. But I can, I can understand the challenges that families may have when they want to find the best education for their children. The voucher program is there to assist low income. It's for those students that, you know, want quality education and it can increase challenges, but at the same time, we have to support greatness of education and not a one size fits all. So I think Watertown offers great opportunities. We have great programs and we just have to continue to make sure we are offering our students the best education that we can. Thank you.
I'm a product of rural public education in Wisconsin and although I don't consider Watertown to be exactly rural, it's certainly not urban. And from my experience from the people who I know who came through the public school systems in communities like Watertown and the community that I grew up in, the public education is unparalleled to any other offered. It's unfortunate that it has to be set at the state level. And as pointed out by other panelists, yes, there is some disadvantages and some benefits in certain districts and certain sectors of Wisconsin where a voucher program may make sense and help bring up some students. My opinion across the board is that it's not, I I'm not in favor of it. However, we do need to come up with something, as stated earlier, that would be more flexible and not be a one size fits all, given that Watertown really, in my opinion, has no need for it, given the quality of our our school district.
I think the voucher system acts as another opportunity for families and students. Again, I think as Lori said, education's not a one size fits all type of thing. So anytime you can offer an opportunity that might be a better fit for a family or a student, I'm okay with that. I know it does affect maybe, I think next year it might affect 6% of our students. I might be involved in the voucher program if I if I have that right. I know, I guess for Watertown, I think, you know, we have enough great programming going on and things happening that it's not going to be something that's going to draw students away because, but I do, I do think that the competition is a good thing. It shouldn't, you shouldn't be afraid to compete against what you have to offer against other schools. Thanks.
I think that my personal opinion is relatively irrelevant on this. I think the program is likely going to stay for the foreseeable future. I think we also have to consider that similar programs that allow tax dollars to follow the student through open enrollment can benefit the district through e-campus, academy and endeavor. So we have to be kind of careful of being very adamant about tax dollars flowing and following the kids. If we, if we're hyper focused on academic achievements and growth goals, that way we can perhaps attract more families to our communities. And I think that Watertown is well positioned for growth. We have the most affordable property values surrounding the other communities. We have all sorts of different options here at Watertown School District to attract families to the district. I think it's just a matter of time, but we have to do something as board members to kickstart that process to to get more people into the families into the district and it'll alleviate some of the financial burdens as well. Thanks.
And question number six, how involved should a school board be in the day-to-day lessons and academic content taught in the classroom?
So the school board is not in the classroom. We have to trust our staff and our teachers that, you know, they are taking the curriculum that we decide with and use it to educate the children in the best way that they can. I think the only reason the school board should be involved is if there is a concern or a question about curriculum. If it's a school-wide, you know, situation, if this is happening in all these classrooms, then then the board may need to get on on top of that and and have some discussions on what's going on. I think at the end of the day, we have to trust our teachers. They know how to teach. They're going to, they're going to, they're not going to do our children wrong. It's it's my true belief. So we deal with it when when that situation comes up.
I'd echo those sentiments 100%. My my concern, having been on the board for a year, and one of our biggest opportunities for improvement as a board at in general is to get more into the strategic level of operation as opposed to the tactical. And I think that a lot of our staff and our teachers feel like their their judgment gets questioned too often and they feel like they have to justify their decisions, whether that be to their superiors or their superior's superiors or at some point to us, just based off of the types of presentations that we receive at the board level. I, like Lori, would rather allow the teachers and the principals and the building administrators working with the tech, the ESC Educational Services Committee to set that and determine what is best to be taught based off of what are the the newest learnings and how to teach it. So from my perspective, in a nutshell, the board should not be involved in day-to-day lessons and academic content unless there becomes an issue that's brought to our attention.
Yes, I agree with that. We hire great teachers and and professionals in our district. I think it's necessary to let them do their jobs. So I think somebody already said it earlier, let the teachers teach. So I'm all in favor of that. I think the only time the board needs to get involved, if there's some kind of a controversy or conflict that maybe might need to be solved, but by and large, let the teachers teach and do their job. Thanks.
I don't think that as a board member, we should be involved in day-to-day lessons and academic content taught in a classroom. Except to the extent that we should be focusing on what to think, but not necessarily how to, I mean, sorry, the other way around. How to think, not what to think. I'm not an expert in the classroom. I openly admit that. I think there's a special instinct that a teacher has to recognize the different kinds of learning that a child engages in. Not everybody learns the same. I think that instinct also, a teacher can look across a room and they know exactly when a child is checked out and not engaged. And they know exactly what it takes to bring them back. I can't get involved with that. I don't have that instinct. But I do want to be there as a support for them so that when something does come up, I want to know about it so that I can help fix it. Thanks.
Yeah, I I agree with pretty much everybody here. The teachers should be doing the teaching. I I don't think the school board has any business trying to tell a teacher how to teach a class. You know, maybe, maybe what, you know, as far as academics, what are we going to teach? But but not how are we going to teach it is is truly what it is. We have to trust our teachers. Thank you.
And question seven, as a school board member, you will receive communication from community members. How will you respond when addressing questions and concerns?
For as much as I would like to respond to every single email that we receive, I found that it was actually better to take those into advisement, collect them, review them all in comparison to each other and then discuss it with the board at the next opportunity. Responding to every single email with the exception of a small thank you oftentimes is a non-starter. One, it's very difficult to have a engaging and fruitful and useful conversation. It tends to be very one-sided with a lot of passions on one side or the other. I know that that frustrates many people who email the board and want a response. But given that we know that there are situations where emailers have then taken response and posted on social media to the detriment of all or to prove a point is exactly why it's not convenient way to engage board members. I have met with several taxpayers and parents over coffee and at other meeting venues where there's a dialogue. But in generally, when we're, when I receive an email, I typically thank them for their input and then make sure we discuss it at the next board meeting.
I I try to respond to all the emails that I get, at least one way, shape or another, whether it be thanking them for the comments or what they're concerned about, or if it's something that I can address. But typically, as Dave said, we'll bring it back to the board level or meet with an administrator where maybe the the question or concern was directed about. But I do try to get back to all, all community members that do email or phone call. And I have met with people in the past as well over coffee and talked about particular issues or a general conversation that they might, they might have. So I try to respond as best I can.
Well, I don't support anti-transparency policies that are pushed, being pushed through our policy committees. I think it's somewhat arrogant, like like the Marie Antoinette let them eat cake approach, which I find deeply disturbing. Board members sometimes forget that they're once a community member that felt they had something to contribute. I'm not a perfect being. Community and staff members should be privy to the rationale being discussed in committee meetings so that they can react to things not being considered. I welcome feedback and input. I don't want there to be any suspicions that there's something to hide. I support feedback. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I I have to agree with 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 Paul and Dave. You know, I want to make sure before I respond with more than just a thank you and and of course, making sure it's addressed at the next meeting. I want to make sure that there's the other rest of the board can kind of see and make sure I'm understanding what the question of the email is, just to make sure that there's not wrong communication or lack of communication or a lack of intelligent communication on that subject before I respond, right? I want to make sure that I I'm getting it right. Going rogue sometimes isn't the best. I believe in transparency. I I believe we should all be communicating with our community. However, if I communicate and and I'm off base with it, I don't think that does our community any well either. So I would probably bring it back to the board, just like Paul and David.
So I believe communication equals transparency. Transparency will bring you trust and communication is only going to build a trusting relationship across the district and with the community. If you don't respond, you're not communicating. That's just, I mean, and I understand there's going to be maybe situations where there's going to be a lot of emails and whether it's parents upset with a decision or whatever the situation is, I think key too is to be proactive. When we're making decisions as a board, we want to make sure that we are doing it as a team with the stakeholders, with the taxpayers, with the staff, the students, the parents, everyone. If you are involving everyone in the process, in the discussion, in the decision and then communicating, it's going to leave a lot of less questions and more trust. And trust is important when when districts are having challenges. So it'd be helpful. Thank you.
Two more questions left. Number eight, what do you think can be done to increase enrollment in the Watertown Unified School District?
Well, we've been working on that challenge. We're trying to do a marketing campaign to try to get out the word that we have some really good programming going here in Watertown. So we've hired a, an outside agency to help us with the marketing of that. And there's various, there are various things that they've come up with. So I think the more we can get the word out that we've got some good programs such as dual language and STEM and E-Academy and the LEAP School. Those are off things that if we market them properly, that we can, I think, get some attention from outside families and students that might want to come to Watertown.
I, sorry, I feel that academic achievement is a, is one of the most basic functions that we need to focus on. Last year, I I feel like we got a report card of meets expectations. But if you've noticed, we're just a sneeze away from exceeds expectations. So I realize that 30% proficiency in math and ELA is not acceptable, but we need to start somewhere. If we set a goal at getting this to closer to 40% and throw like a huge celebration when we exceed that, I think we can expect to bump that goal higher and higher by 5% every year thereafter. I'm convinced that because we have some of the best staff, it's not impossible for us to significantly exceed expectations in the very near future. We're there. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there were some excellent things hit on already in both of those answers. So obviously, you know, the advertising and marketing piece has to be there. You know, just talking to to community members, I've heard a lot of negative in our community about certain things. However, I I don't believe the advertising or marketing of all of the programs we have has really gotten out there, even in our own community. I I think we have some fantastic teachers. I think we have some fantastic programs. And I think if more was known about them, it would definitely help. Thank you.
Excuse me. I believe that a key, first, we need to to make sure that we are retaining the students that we have. Retention rate is crucial for enrollment growth. This is why it's important to be listening to, you know, students, parents, staff. What, 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 what are the needs? What are we going to do to keep our students in our district? To not lose them. Obviously, there's going to be unforeseen reasons. They move or there's always reasons for enrollments being down because the birth rate is low. There's, there's all kinds of, but if it's something we can control, then we need to make sure that we are offering a safe and positive environment for our students. We need to make sure that that there's happy kids and happy teachers walking around. And if they're not, why? And we really need to market the opportunities that we have as a district internally with our families on top of externally, making sure that our kids with our families on top of externally, making sure that our kids are that are in the school are getting those those opportunities. And then bring more in. Thank you.
This is probably the topic that brought me to the school board to begin with. And I know there's a lot of people who are very passionate about different aspects of operating a school district as well as uh teaching children. But when you look at Watertown as a whole, whether it be uh the number of live births at our hospital, uh, I'm on the hospital board, uh, trying to improve the overall, not enrollment at the hospital, but the use of its services. I'm also the chair of the County Economic Development Organization, trying to bring more money, more investment, more jobs, more uh companies into Watertown. Um, I I'm not, I don't not live in the city, so I'm not in any city uh boards. But I can tell you that they'd really like to have more residents and higher tax base. Every single one of these things is related, and it's related at a very high macroeconomic level. It is not just about one good teacher or or one uh really pleasantly painted and decorated classroom. Those things help. Uh, however, all of the entities that we all rely on, that we work with, that we value, that we enjoy with each other, uh, we see each other at the parks, these all work together, and Watertown has a lot of work cut out for it. So it's not appropriate ever to look at it in the vacuum or in the narrow lens of just the school district. It has to be looked at as a larger issue for the community, and uh that's why I'm on the board.
And our last question, what are the biggest challenges that the school board will face during the next three years?
Well, obviously, we have a number of them, uh, mental health, the budget, uh, learning loss. Um, if we focus on some of the things that we know, like for instance, Avid Solutions, it happens to be a best teaching practices that it that happens to be used by our teachers. I think if we're able to utilize those as efficiently as possible, I think that that's going to propel us in the right direction. We can, if we're hyper focused on curriculum alignment throughout the the in in throughout the district so that we can uh focus on the learned skills that are that the the kids have already learned, so we're not duplicating those later on. The teachers can move on to a newer skill sooner. Um, then of course, making sure that staff aren't subbing during prep periods. Um, and that's, I think that's a pretty good start. Thank you.
So if I only had a crystal ball, right? Um, but I, you know, I, if if I were to read the very foggy one that I have, I would have to say that teacher retention is going to be a a a major challenge. I think we have some very great teachers. However, I think there's been some challenging times over the last couple of years for them a- and their parents and and assists. Uh, I think budget is going to be a a a major concern that we're really going to have to face uh in the next few years. And we just kind of touched on a topic uh the last round of questions uh with student retention and enrollment. I I I think I think that's really going to have to be addressed over the next few years as well. Thank you.
So I agree. Um, obviously, there's going to be current challenges with the budget. Um, we're seeing already started challenges with enrollments, and that's, I think, going to always be a a challenge for a district. If you're, you know, trying to improve, those are always going to be a challenge. Um, but I think my biggest worry is the achievement gap. Um, I think the achievement gap is a concern in the district, parents, the whole community, and even in our state and probably throughout the country. Um, there's no simple solution to that, but I think we have a lot of roadblocks that are impacting our achievement for our students, which is impacting the the staff and the teachers and the environment. And if we can break down some of those with the learning laws, the mental health, the behavior issues we're hearing, um, those roadblocks, if we can work with maybe S R funds and get some some ideas and get those things out of the way, I think um we can start focusing on achievement, which will all come together with our budget enrollments and um success. Thank you.
I'd probably go with decreasing enrollment is our biggest challenge. I said decreasing enrollment, that's just the state's revenue formula for how then we're uh bringing the money into the district. But with decreasing enrollment, until we see it uh ebb and begin to flow, um, there's a lot of assets, fixed assets, uh, and and other variable assets that we're maintaining uh that we have to uh wipe off that hazy crystal ball. Uh, Mike, 100% agree. We don't know where we're going to be in four or five years. Um, do we need a- all five elementary schools? Do we need to arrange our busing the way that we do? Um, these are all great questions, but they all come from the fact that currently we're still forecasting um reducing or diminishing enrollment. And so the effort has to be on getting that to turn. Uh, whether we do that through marketing the e-campus, whether we do that in getting more jobs into Watertown, more manufacturers, more companies, uh, whether we do that through other open enrollment means, or just having a higher quality that people want to make as a destination. Um, that will start to trickle through everything else. Um, and I don't want to diminish what Lori just said, because yes, uh, the the learning loss, the mental health, uh, all very important as well. Um, and and we need to be working on those simultaneously.
Uh, Dave, you uh hit a lot of those points right on point. I would have to agree that, you know, in budget, the budget in three years, we're gonna uh uh referendum monies are gonna be uh be up at that particular point, so we're going to have to look at that. I think another uh and and part of that is enrollment projections as well, because uh we see that declining uh projections in that. Uh, also, our literary scores, that would be something that I'd like to see as a challenge, but I'm I'm really, really hopeful that this is going to uh improve greatly, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, and of course, you know, just maintaining our staff and our our teachers uh and and in hiring, just in general, I think in the future is going to be difficult for a a lot of districts. So I see it as a potential. But but again, I think uh Watertown has a great opportunity, so hopefully it'll be a destination for teachers as well. So um, those are the main challenges that I see.
Okay, and closing, each candidate will have two minutes to tell us why they are the best candidate to serve on the Watertown School Board.
Um, well, thank you, uh, is where I want to start. I thank you for getting us all together tonight and being able to uh to address some potential issues and 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 share some of our feelings on how we do things. Um, I have to say that I I I truly agree with Dave. He made a comment before, and I'm going to use part of my time to kind of stump for Dave, right? Uh, you know, getting community involvement uh i- is is a necessity, you know, bringing in the good jobs, bringing in uh quality people uh to 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 live in our communities is 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 a fantastic thought. Uh, and I truly look forward to helping with with those issues uh being a member of the school board. Uh, thank you for your time and and hope to see you all soon. Thank you.
So I believe every single one of us here and the current members on the board, um, I believe that, you know, we all really just want what's best for for our entire school district. Um, I know sometimes there's a lot of noise and things that get in the way, but at the end of the day, that is what we all care about. Um, we care about our district, the community and our students most of all. Um, I'm willing to invest my time. Um, I'm, I I I have a lot that I will need to learn. I'm not afraid to say that, but I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to dig my heels in. I'm willing to do whatever I need to do to help success um for everyone. I believe Watertown um School District has a great team. We have educators to teach, administrators that lead, parents to parent, and we have a great amount of students. Um, and hopefully more in the future that we, you know, that just deserve the best education they can get. Um, I'd love the opportunity to uh join the team as a board member and um assist in making whatever um whatever is assist in making it better than it already is. Thank you.
Hi, uh, no, I don't think that uh I'm the best person for the team. I think that a team uh just by its definition is made up of people with different skills, different views, different capabilities, different perspectives. And uh that that team has to be cohesive. The one key thing they have to have is the ability to listen to each other and understand each other's perspectives, uh, leave their agendas at the door and make sure that they're taking it all into consideration um eh and and make the best decision possible. Um, I I welcome the opportunity to continue to serve. I wish all the other uh panelists on this call good luck in the upcoming election. I'd be very interested in talking to you more during a board meeting uh before, during or after. And uh with that, thanks for having us and uh have a good night.
Well, I came on the school board as a career educator six years ago. Uh, the experience of the day to day operations of teaching students and working collaboratively with fellow teachers and administrators and support staff has really benefited me over the last few years as a board member. I also support and encourage uh parent involvement in their education of their children. And I support strong partnerships between school and the community. Having served on the board uh level committees, I'm familiar with the fiscal management and budgetary issues that we face, curriculum and instruction, the process of short and long term planning, uh, human resource responsibilities and school policy oversight and development. Also, I think I bring a listening ear, open mindedness, and a willingness to make tough choices, challenging decisions um where some will feel supported and and like that they've been heard while others might uh feel disappointed and maybe their voice hasn't been heard. Uh, I feel it's important to continually look for ways for the district to deliver the best possible education for students while getting the most out of the taxpayer dollar. Uh, I believe education is an investment that in our community that shouldn't be ignored. And I guess in closing, I'd just like to say as a rookie teacher some years ago, I heard it once said that our school should be the best show in town. Well, that seemed to always resonate with me, and I I'll kind of bring it up tonight. So in closing, I'll just say, I hope together that we can make Watertown Schools the best show in town. So thanks for the opportunity, and I ask for your vote on April 5th. Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I know that this is a lot to take in. Uh, but I'm optimistic. We're on the brink of great things happening right here in Watertown. I think we're well positioned for growth as a community, which can in and of itself ease some financial concerns as a district. We are just a sneeze away from being, from achieving significantly exceeding expectations from the state report card. It's going to be like moving a freight train, but you know how freight trains are. Once you get it rolling, trains can pick up momentum. Regardless of the outcome of this election, I'm going to be here to be your advocate. Parents, I'm your advocate. I want to be there to see your kids accomplish success. Teachers, I'm your advocate. Whether you push a broom, work in a classroom, drive a bus, or maintain facilities, I am proud of your contribution and respect your hard work. I will support a district culture that doesn't marginalize you, our stakeholders. Please, I welcome your feedback. And I support full transparency. Parents, staff, community members deserve the rationale behind the decisions being made. Re- recordings of committee meetings um help board to understand and address considerations that have been overlooked before a critical vote. Sometimes we need to admit it when something doesn't work, so that we can find what does. I need to know how you feel. Speak up. It's hard to fix something if you aren't told what's broken. I expect that you won't be a stranger. Please consider Craig Gortman on April 5th. Thank you. Bye bye.
On behalf of the Watertown branch of the AAUW, I'd like to thank our candidates for taking time to be with us and for letting the voters get to know you better. Remember, Election Day is April 5th. Remember, to your vote is very, very important. And for those voting in the city of Watertown, your voting location may have changed. To find out more, visit myvote.wi.gov, the City of Watertown website, or call 920-262-4000. Thank you for being a more informed voter and good evening.
Take a trip.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.